Okay, should we get this lit up? Are you okay, you guys? All right, well, welcome, everyone, to the Tuesday, January 17th, the 2017 City Council meeting. At this time, I will call the meeting to order, and we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, Shelley, you want to do a roll call for us?
I can. Elbertson?
Here.
Bueller?
Here.
Danforth?
Here.
Manti?
Here.
Reeffenberger?
Here.
Roby?
Here.
Solom? Absent. Thorson?
Here.
Tupper?
Here.
Philhauer?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, I would like an approval of the consent agenda, but before we get that approval, I would like to, on B, pull number four out of that, off of that particular one. So I would like a motion of second for that. What's up?
Pull which one? Their number?
On the approval to write off uncollectible accounts received or remit to collection agency, I'd like B pulled off of four. I'm sorry. I turned that around.
Off of agenda, off of the consent agenda, one. One B, right?
Four off of B. Let me find it here.
Remove one B.
No. No, I don't want the whole thing removed. What I want, let me just, let me just read it to you. I'll just find it here. It is, "For the Goss Opera House, police for $320.21 and $96.06 for a total of $416.27." I'd like that pulled off for now.
Oh, just literally removed from the write-offs?
Removed that off, yes.
That's what you're asking?
Yes. I'd like that one removed at this time. There needs to be a little discussion on that. Does that make sense? Okay. All right, so I have a motion from Mike.
Second.
Second by Bill. Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Okay, number two, I'm gonna look for a motion of second for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Glenn, second by Beth. Any questions, concerns, changes? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Number three, ordinance number 16-28, amending section 14.0209 regarding prohibiting injury to public trees to clarify nuisance tree trimming requirements. This is a second reading, and I will look for a motion of second for discussion. Motion by Randy, second by Mike. Any questions that you want Justin to talk about, or you want to go over it quickly, Justin?
I can do that, Mayor, certainly. So this is effectively a second reading of a second reading, just because this amendment was brought up at the second reading and was approved, or in principle there. Now, this is for the final reading of this ordinance. It was initially on here just simply to get rid of any sort of confusion as to how this ordinance that prohibits the injuring of public trees relates back to another ordinance that deals with nuisance trees, namely those trees that hang too low over a sidewalk where our ordinance empowers landowners to be able to address those trees. The amendment came after municipal utilities contacted us and stated that they would like an exception as well for their important operations to protect their lines and allow them to trim trees when their lines are jeopardized by trees.
Thanks, Justin. Any questions on this? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number four, first reading of ordinance number 16-29, amending section 14.0704 regarding inspection of the Dutch elm disease infections. Can I give us just a little history on that then, Justin?
Will do, Mayor. This is different than the prior ordinance because, in the first reading, because we did not have language at the first, at the second reading of ordinance 1629. This is the first time you're seeing this language, and so it's effectively a first reading. What we have here is a comprehensive rewrite. Before, we had just one section, that would be section 140704, that we were looking at revising. Now, we're looking at revising other sections within Title 14 at the suggestion of the City Council at the last, at the last meeting. I worked with Jay, and he was instrumental in providing a great deal of advice on where to look to create a comprehensive ordinance rewrite that would vest authority in the superintendent of forestry to be able to aggressively investigate and deal with diseases of trees that would prove fatal and would quickly spread to other trees. So essentially, they were diseases that, quote-unquote, constitute an imminent hazard, end quote, which is a key legal phrase for the ability of the city to be able to abate a public nuisance that is private property. So anyways, I'll go down the list here briefly and explain each change. In order to make these changes comprehensive, we had to look at other sections and other authority elsewhere, namely with the board, the park board. And so this first revision here to 140405 just clarifies that the board isn't given sole discretion to remove trees in public places, that the superintendent has the authority when these two diseases are found with the trees. The same is the rationale for the change to 14041, 140412, and that takes the disease component out of the board's purview and clarifies that it should be placed with the superintendent. Further down, we have 140603, which simply underscores the superintendent's authority, now extends to all public nuisance tree diseases. And then finally, chapter 1407 is comprehensively revised, taking what was once the Dutch elm disease chapter and turning it into the, essentially, the nuisance tree disease chapter, broadening it, because the framework that's there for procedural due process is, is still effective for finding, you know, vesting the superintendent with investigative authority and how that process plays out. That all has merit, and it applies equally to elm tree, Dutch elm disease, as well as the Emerald Ash Bore disease. So coming down through, you can see the changes have been made to reflect both diseases, to reflect-
Justin, can I stop you there for just a second?
Yes, absolutely.
I apologize. On 140702, is it not appropriate to have any kind of catch-all? I mean, we specifically delineate two diseases. There's gonna be something else that comes along at some point.
And the hope would be, Councilman, that at that time, that would be something specifically defined in ordinance. And the reason why I suggest that is because what this chapter does is it effectively allows a city rep, now granted, an expert in their field, an expert in disease, tree disease, to make a determination that a tree should be removed, which is arguably real property, potentially. And so, in order to make that determination, that a tree disease is an imminent threat, from a legal perspective, it makes most sense to enumerate those diseases, to make that case to a court. So that's, that's the reason why a catch-all isn't in there. And really, as it stands right now, there are only two diseases that fit the category of being an imminent hazard, meaning they're, they're fatal to a tree, they're fast-spreading, and removing a tree gets rid of the disease. And that's with the Dutch elm disease and with the Emerald Ash Bore disease. Now, Emerald Ash Bore still hasn't made it to this community, and Jay can certainly answer your questions in greater detail with that, but it is in eastern Minnesota, there are reports of it there, so it's making its way. But those are really the two diseases that pose a reasonable threat and meet those criteria.
Today.
That's correct. But that can easily be changed by the City Council. And in fact, the more that you have on the record in minutes justifying the imminent threat, the better the case is to make in court.
Within this, though, and I, and maybe it's already in here, but if somebody declares a tree must be removed, is there an appeals process anywhere along the line?
As it stands right now, the party aggrieved, the party who says, "No, the tree isn't diseased," can request the park board, basically, hold off on the decision, ask for a stay, and then, because there isn't any right of appeal explicit in this chapter, they would then go to Circuit Court to have this dealt with there, to try to overturn the superintendent's decision. Now, that can certainly be changed within this framework. The one thing I would say to support the superintendent being able to have that authority is that the decision of whether or not a tree is diseased or not is a pretty black-and-white determination. Either there is the presence of the Dutch elm pathogens or the insects that spread it, or the same with the Emerald Ash Bore. It's a black-or-white determination, generally speaking. Is that fair to say, Jay, or? Okay.
Okay. That is first reading, and that'll be on our next council meeting. Number five, first reading of ordinance number 1701, amending chapter 21.70, the revised ordinance of the City of Watertown regarding home occupations. And again, Justin, this is your call.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance was brought up as a concept here, a couple of work sessions removed from today. And there, you know, the mayor had brought out that this concept derived from the fact that, you know, we have a number of folks telecommuting nowadays. The nature of the workforce has changed, where more people are doing work outside, out of their homes, whether as employees or through some businesses online as sole proprietors. And so what this language was meant to do is to update our conception of home occupations that truly impact a neighborhood and create a more streamlined process so that, you know, folks can look at this ordinance and say, see whether or not they need to get a home occupations conditional use permit. Because as it stands right now, the language is ambiguous. Anybody working out of their home could, in theory, constitute a home occupation and thus require the conditional use permit. However, we know from past practice that the second floor here at City Hall Building Services has taken a look at some of these applicants and has dissuaded them from even coming before the Board of Adjustment to obtain a permit, because they clearly didn't meet any of the rationales for why this, this chapter on home occupations exists in the first place. So what this language does is it takes what is the, the policy, unspoken or unwritten policy of second floor, and incorporates it into written form.
Okay. And again, that's first reading, and that will be on the next council meeting.
Just a procedureally, the planning commission has already looked at this and has come through, or has their blessing, correct?
That is correct, Councilman.
Okay. Number six, first reading of ordinance number 17-04, amending section 10.0202 of the revised ordinances of the City of Watertown to clarify procedure for modification variances to the fire code. And again, first reading, and Justin, you want to give us a short synopsis on that?
Yes, Mayor, absolutely. This is just a housekeeping measure. The language that existed, that exists currently in 100202 is somewhat unclear, and the reason for that was because of a transcription issue between the International Fire Code, where a lot of this language is derived, and the ordinance as it sets today. This would simply refine the language, make sure that it accurately reflects what's in the International Fire Code.
Thanks, Justin. Number seven, resolution number 17-01, providing for the classification salaries of certain City of Watertown employees and officers for the period commencing January 1 of 2017. I'll look for a motion of second for any discussion. Motion by Bruce, second by Dan. Any questions on that, guys? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. Number eight, resolution number 17-02, providing for the classification salary guidelines of certain City of Watertown employees for the period commencing January, January 1 of 2017. I'll look for a motion of second for discussion. Motion by Randy, second by Beth. Any questions on this?
Just a question, why, why is this two separate resolutions?
One lays out the exempt staff and any staff that is non-union eligible, and then 1702 just addresses the, the three unions that are, and the staff that are eligible.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, authorization for the mayor to sign an amended, amended purchase agreement with Dolores J. Cook to purchase five acres of land adjacent to the Watertown landfill in the amount of $40,500. You will notice that this says amended purchase. What we're using is the original purchase, and we're amending the description of the property of the land being, being bought. This is adjacent to the landfill. We've already bought five acres. This is another five. So I will look for a motion of second for discussion. So, motion by Glenn, second by Bruce. Any questions on this? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor?
Mayor, could, could I ask for a bit of privilege? Could I ask for the council's consideration, a potential motion to amend the purchase agreement, the amended purchase agreement further?
Okay.
That, all I'd be asking for, Mayor, and I apologize, it would be an amendment to paragraph four, and the way it would read is, "The 2016 real estate taxes due in 2017 and the 2017 taxes due in 2018 shall be paid by seller, and all subsequent taxes shall be paid by buyer." The rationale for this suggestion is so that the city doesn't pay any taxes to the county. We want to make sure that, you know, the January 2017 taxes, which, if this weren't changed, would be paid by the city, would instead be paid by Ms. Cook.
Sounds great. So I will need an amended motion on that. Who made the motion, Shelley? Glenn did?
I'll amend to reflect Justin's.
Okay, so I have an amended motion by Glenn, and second by Bruce. Any questions?
Five acres, is that pretty much what they need for, to sell?
Yeah, they're looking at different financial situations within the family, and they're trying to just liquidate smaller pieces as they go along here.
It's more for the seller than for us, as far as the amount.
Right.
So we have an option on some additional land out there yet?
We do.
Correct?
Yeah, we have an option on, I forget how many acres it is, but-
We, that's, that's correct.
Eighty, so this will be 10 out of the 80, so there's still 70 acres that we have the option to purchase. So I will look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we'll move on. Number 10, authorization for the mayor to sign contract amendment number one to the contract with Houston Engineering for the landfill cell number six construction project, increasing the contract amount by $57,196. I'll look for a motion of second, then we'll turn this over to Shane. Motion by Randy, second by Mike. Shane, if you want to take that?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, as I indicated in my memo in the council packet, this project was initiated in the fall of 2013. Subsequently, Houston Engineering Company did the design work for the project, and then in December of 2015, we entered an agreement for them to proceed into the construction phase of the project. Construction began in June of 2016, and subsequently, the contractor fell behind schedule almost immediately, did not complete the project on schedule. And then, at the end of the project, some, some of the work was indicated to not be satisfactory and needs to be reconstructed this spring. So that's why the, this amendment takes care of all of the extra engineering from September 30 till roughly the end of November, because there was extra engineering fees and schedule throughout the extended time that the project went past its original completion date, which was September 30. Then also recognizing how much more effort we're gonna have to do to get the cell completely constructed to spec so that we can start putting garbage in it and get it certified through the state. So a lot of the construction services that we approved in December of 2015 will need to be redone. We do, we have entered the liquidated damages phase of the contract as of September 30, so we've, we've already set aside $18,500 in funds for that effort between September 30 and November 17. And when work resumes, we will again be collecting liquidated damages at the rate of $500 per day. So a lot of this extra engineering cost will be offset by the collection of those liquidated damages. It may not cover it all, but it'll cover a substantial portion of it. Now, this is an enterprise fund, so there is funding to pay for the unbalanced portion of the engineering. The other thing that will be, the contractor will pay all direct costs for the retesting of soils. So any, any of those hard costs that the city paid for the first time around and now subsequently have been deemed to be unacceptable, they pay those hard costs as well. So with that, I'll stop and see if there's any questions.
Shane, when you say you're confident it's gonna cover a good percentage of it or a good portion of it, I mean, does that mean it's 60% or 95%? Or, I mean, I know you don't have an exact number, but you gotta have something in that area.
Well, I do, I do have a really good representative. The amount of extra effort in the engineering fees for the period of September 30 to November 17th was identified at $20,000. We've collected $18,500 in damages through that same period of time. So it's gonna be really close. It may not be dollar-for-dollar, but, but it represents a pretty good portion, yeah.
Is the, the company that failed to accomplish this the first time around, are they the ones doing the work the second time?
They are, and we're going-
And there will be no cost to us on any of that work?
No. No.
Shane, I got a question. The, the original agreement was $66,912 to Houston Engineering, is that correct?
Yes.
And now, we're asking to increase it by $57,000. I mean, it's almost double. I mean, is the extra work-
Well, yep, yep. I do have a, a brief explanation for that. During the initial construction phase, we only, only identified certain periods of time where we would have to have inspection services on-site, but due to the failed work, we now want to go to full-time inspection, because we're not gonna, we're not gonna leave any question marks through the reworking of the material now. We're, we're gonna have somebody out there all day, every day, observing the work, making sure that it's getting done, so that we can certify this with the state, that the cell complies with the state regulations and get, get it using garbage. So that's, there is a slight change in the scope of the engineering construction services based on that. And I think it's value well-spent. I mean, we, we can't keep back, backpedaling on this. This has got to get done quickly in the spring and, and also to satisfaction.
Any other questions for Shane? Hearing none, I will look for council approval here. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number 11, authorization for the mayor to sign a professional service contract with Houston Engineering Incorporated for engineering services for the 2017 re-permitting application project in the amount of $22,946. At this time, I'll look for a motion of second for discussion, and we'll turn it over to Shane. Motion by Beth, second by Bruce. Shane, if you want to take this one.
Thank you, Mayor. The permit for the landfill is due to be resubmitted in 2017, so since Houston Engineering has done our substantial portion of the engineering services at the landfill over the last, well, since the last three, three-plus years, we decided to have them continue with the services out there by rewriting the permit for the facility. And they gave us a quote early on, before we got to this phase, and the landfill staff has budgeted for this money and have it in their capital, so.
Shane, you said "resubmitted," so is this something that we've already paid for once?
No. It's how they word their permitting process.
So this is something that would have taken place either way? It just, it's not, when you said "re-submitting," that's, that's why I questioned it, so?
Yep, nope, that's just verbiage.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Number 11, or I'm sorry, number 12, consideration of bids received for cleaning services at City Hall and downtown restrooms. What I would like to do on this particular one is, we've had discussion about City Hall needing a, a part-time cleaning service anyhow. I would like to, when we make a motion on this, to approve the downtown restrooms and reject the City Hall cleaning. And I believe at that time, we can add actually a part-time person that can, can do more for us. They can do some cleaning, possibility of doing some light bulb changing and things like that, which we don't have at this time. And for a couple thousand bucks a month, I think it would be well worth our time. So if you're okay with that, that's how I'd like the motion to read.
And just to piggyback off the mayor's comments, we can reject portions of bids. That is completely within our wherewithal. State statute allows it, per SDCL 518A12.
Yeah, and we'd be looking at the ServiceMaster bid for $520 per month for the Uptown Community Restrooms.
Who's had the contract in the past?
ServiceMaster.
That's what I thought.
Yep. So I will look for a motion of second. If you could make that motion to reject the City Hall and keep the downtown. So I have a motion by Bruce to do that, and a second by Dan. Any questions on that? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Number 13, consideration of change order number two, which is a final to the contract with Jeff Argo Excavating for the Big Sioux River weir breach project, increasing the contract amount $2,513.56. I'll look for a motion of second for discussion. Motion by Bill, second by Mike. Shane, do you want to just kind of touch base on this a little bit for us?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I will clarify, all of the work has been completed. That's why you're seeing a, a final change order. The only changes to the contract was the previous $500 change order that was approved in December. Then, due to time constraints, and we did kind of hash over that, those patches of the handling holes and did a partial repair of that, so we, we filled those holes over the area of the weir breach that needed to be backfilled with soil, so we did that. And then, the only other overrun was there was a $266 overrun in fill material, which, so we, we hit all of our project costs here really close. And, you know, the final project cost is $141,080.16.
Any questions for Shane on that?
Shane, did we end up, you know, I think we said we had two different holes on there. Did we fill up, or fill or repair all of those holes on there, or just the top ones?
Okay, all the holes are on the top, but there was a piece that we thought was critical in where we put backfill in, because that has the potential to settle and, and expose the, the weir. We were most concerned with those. Everywhere else, the weir plates are, are driven into the dirt and it's native soils, and we didn't have to do a lot of filling. We decided that, based on our conversation of last month, to wait and see how those went, and then if they were problems, we'd go fix those. Otherwise, we don't anticipate that they're really gonna be that much of a headache.
Shane, did we just tack weld plates in those holes? Is that what we did?
A little bit more than tack weld, but they, they, I won't say that they're watertight, but they're pretty, pretty well welded in, in place, yeah.
Any other questions? Is the work all being completed then, Shane?
Yes, we will be holding a portion of the retainer until spring to make sure that all the seating and erosion control items are carried through.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And Shane, thanks for getting that done. I know that was a big deal, and spring's right around the corner. We're almost ready for it, so this is good. So number 14, old business. This is interesting that we see Scott here again. We, consideration of bids received for the Police Department utility vehicles, and you guys will remember, we had this on the last council meeting. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you discuss a little bit before I go for a motion of second on it.
Sure. At the January 3rd City Council meeting, this body authorized the Police Department to purchase four Dodge Durango sport utility vehicles for the Police Department. Upon initiating the order, it was discovered that there are two specific- Upon initiating the order, it was discovered that there are two specific issues that would conflict with our normal operations. And as a result of that, we would ask that the council rescind the authorization and look at the next low, lowest bid for police vehicles.
Was, what was the issue, or the issues?
Do you want a motion first or should I?
Yeah, do you need a motion for, to rescind that or do you need a motion to accept this other bid? What do you guys really want?
So the way that statute reads is you are authorized to cancel an award, which is effectively what was done here at the last meeting. So you'd be canceling that based on a bid mistake. And the bid mistake would be a determination that the bid was met, including all of its specifications, when in fact, there was a specification that was not met. And in this case, the specification, if I understand correctly, Captain, is the fact that the Durango did not have vinyl floorboards or floor mats. It instead only came in carpeted. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. That's one of the two issues.
Okay, and that was the one bid spec issue, is that?
Sure, that is the one bid specification that it did not meet.
And, and so the, the other specific, or the other issue was?
The other issue is center councils. The vehicle comes with a center council that cannot be removed. And initially, prior to the last city council meeting, I had spoke with the sales rep and we thought that it could be removed, but it turns out it can't be, so.
Okay.
So I guess my question, back to my question is, how do you want the motion to read? Do you want this motion to read that we reject the original and, and move on forward with this, or how do you want it?
So I would suggest, Mayor, that there be a motion to cancel the award and then to go with the next lowest bid that met all the specifications.
Okay, so I'll be looking for a motion in a second to cancel the original bid and go with the, the next lowest bidder.
I'd make that motion.
A motion by Beth and a second by Bill.
Mayor, I will recuse myself from vote on this for conflict of interest.
Okay, Randy's recusing himself on this. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. You also have on there other, other old business. Is there anything that need to be done on that particular one? I don't believe so. Any new business? Thanks, Scott. Any new business that we need to discuss? Hearing none there, any liaison member reports? You certainly can.
Well, why don't we just take a minute then and we'll update the public on, on where we're at with the new Prairie Lakes Wellness Facility. As of last week, the work to complete the aquatic center started and, and for the most part, those pools actually are, are close to being filled, if not full now. The balance of the facility is in some of its earliest cleaning processes, final cleaning processes. And I think it's the end of the month, we will go through our first walkthrough with both the architect and the construction manager, bits, pits construction. And we'll be going through the checklist and, and for the first level of checklist on it as far as that goes. So we're on schedule. If everything works out right, well for us, we will probably get the keys somewhere at the end of the second or third week of February. And then, we will be putting out plans for when the facility will open.
It's amazing how much water can go in and out of like four garden hoses, you know? I mean, thousands and thousands of gallons to fill up that, that pool. Is that what it is, a million gallons? Yeah, when I first went up there, you're seeing these little garden hoses going in there. I'm thinking, you know, why don't we just put the big old fire truck in there and get it, get it done? But it did work out. It's, it's quite interesting. Anything else? Anybody have anything else they wanna share tonight? Don, you got anything you wanna say?
I'm good.
Okay. Is there any need to go into executive session? Otherwise, I'll ask for a motion in a second to adjourn. Motion by Randy, second by Brucey. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.